The Hammond City Council Public Hearing is now in order. Roll call.
Johnny Blunt.
Here.
Jason Hood.
Here.
Bobby Martin.
Here.
Lamar Marshall.
Here.
Mike Williams.
Here. Public hearing. An ordinance to provide for written authorization for trash fires and penalties for violation. Councilman Marshall.
Yes, Mr. President. I want to have, I'll let the chief come up and just talk about it real quickly. It's really not, it's not a big change. All we're actually doing is clarifying what's obviously in the policy or in the ordinance, and then making sure that we add some, uh, a line for fines if we do have violations, and also make sure that there is some type of written documentation in the very, very, very few instances that, that we would get approved to do that.
John Thomas, Fire Chief. I don't have a problem with the ordinance. Didn't have that much before, but I do understand what one, just that written permission instead of it was a verbal, just closing a little loophole that was in there. That's really what we're doing. Really, within the city limits, we don't have any burning whatsoever. The permits are very seldom even issued. If there would be one, that'd be some real good circumstances. In the past, about the only one we've written would be a bonfire at Southeastern or something like that, some type of ceremonial-type fires, about it. Otherwise, as far as regular garbage and trash fires, we don't allow that in the city anyway. So, I think this here is just closing a little loophole that was in there where it just has to be a written, written thing, so I support it.
So, basically, what would one have to do?
They would have to get approval from the, from the chief.
Right. They'd have to contact us and ask if they can burn, and have, depending on what it is, whether we give them a permit. Usually then, at that point, that's why it doesn't need, that we'll give it to Fire Prevention. They'll make sure that if it's like at Southeastern, what specifically they're burning, where they're burning that, and how they're going to deal with it as far as extinguishing it, whether we're going to extinguish it when it's over with, something like that. But as far as just our regular resident calls and wanting to burn their leaves in the backyard, they're not going to get that.
So, they would have to come to your office at the fire station?
To get, in order to get the written, that's what they'd have to do.
But, Mr. President, but the thing is that there really isn't going to be any authorizations because unless in the very few cases where that happens. And I think what it will also do is it will clear up, clarify for law enforcement. So if a, if a neighbor calls to complain about a fire burning next door because of potential hazards on their property, the law enforcement should know without a doubt that if there's not a documentation in hand, that there definitely a violation of a city ordinance, which will allow them to be able to process that a lot easier without little speculation.
An ordinance to adopt and establish a tax on all taxable property within the corporate limits of Hammond for the year 2014. Jenny Wilson.
Good afternoon. This is just a formality that is mandated by state law each year that we adopt the millage rates for the upcoming year. We are not in a reassessment year, so we're not even talking about rolling forward or rolling backwards, which would lower or increase the millage rates for taxes that have already been voted on by the public. So, what we are doing is just adopting the existing millage rates. They are the same as last year with no increase or decrease, and that's what we're asking for.
Are there any public input? Well, that concludes the public hearing. Now, we will go into our regular session. Roll call, please.
Johnny Blunt.
Here.
Jason Hood.
Here.
Bobby Martin.
Here.
Lamar Marshall.
Here.
Mike Williams.
Here.
Stand for prayer.
Ask you to join us as we pause for a moment, turn our attention to Almighty Creator, O God, the Author of all life, the giver of all gifts, the Omega, the Alpha, the Omega. We turn to you tonight in prayer and supplication, thanking you first of all for the good, for the gift of our community of Hammond, America. We also thank you for the men and women who take upon themselves the responsibility of governing and managing our city. We ask that you, through the Holy Spirit, give them the wisdom to make good decisions that will enhance the lives of all of our citizens. We thank you for this great nation of ours and for the privileges we enjoy. At a time when many in the world are being persecuted through suffering from wars and diseases such as Ebola, we thank you for the relative peace and security that we enjoy in this nation of ours. And we ask that you continue to bless us. Bless us by making us aware that all of us are brothers and sisters in one. Teach us to love and care and to support each other in all things. We pray especially for the men and women who defend our rights both at home and abroad, and ask that you return them safely. The closest prayer of thanksgiving and supplication in the manner of one is say to Saint Ben.
As many of us know, the mayor is in Idaho at a housing conference. We had a successful hot August nights, which is growing. Maybe next year we'll change a few things and maybe clear the streets a little more from parking, and also add some additional police officers. We had a really great crowd, and it was very successful, so we're proud of that. And as we know, we can always learn from everything that we have, so it was a successful event, and that's the, in my opinion.
Are there any new businesses in town? Okay, Mr. Dan. Approve of minutes, please.
Make a motion to approve the minutes from August 5th, 2014. Second.
Johnny Blunt.
Aye.
Jason Hood.
Aye.
Bobby Martin.
Aye.
Lamar Marshall.
Aye.
Mike Williams. Motion approved.
Resolutions, none. Old business, none. New business. A resolution to authorize the purchase of servers, shared storage and backup software for IT department, for $63,748 from CMA Technology Solutions Incorporated. Bid RFP 15-07. Mr. Peters.
Thank you. We come, uh, ask for authorization to purchase servers and so forth for the IT department. They brought it, uh, to the purchasing department. We bid it, properly bid, and we came out with CMA Technology at $63,748.
Send the budget.
Send the budget.
How much on the budget?
About $20,000.
Make a motion to approve. Second.
Johnny Blunt.
Aye.
Jason Hood.
Aye.
Bobby Martin.
Aye.
Lamar Marshall.
Aye.
Mike Williams. Motion approved.
Number two. A resolution to authorize the purchase of 11 Ford SUV police pursuit units from Beale Hood Ford Hammond, Louisiana. Six marked at $27,532, and five unmarked at $25,605, for a total of $282,417. State contract number 409701. Payment through the millage funds. Ernest Peters.
I think that pretty much says it all. Police Department came, wanted to purchase 11 vehicles. Uh, it was in the millage fund, so we got administrative approval, so now we just need to have council approval.
Thank you, sir.
Motion to approve. Second.
Johnny Blunt.
Aye.
Jason Hood.
Aye.
Bobby Martin.
Aye.
Lamar Marshall.
Aye.
Mike Williams.
Aye.
Motion approved.
Number three. A resolution to authorize the purchase of one each F-350 regular chest cab four-by-two truck for the street department. $27,247.76 after 3% variance for local dealership from Beale Hood Ford Hammond, Louisiana. Ernest Peters.
And this is for the street department. Robert Morgan brought it forth, having a need for it. Again, it was approved by administration. Now, we need council approval to proceed on with the purchase.
Just, can you explain what it means by that after 3% variance? What does that mean?
That simply means that, uh, the state contract, uh, Hickson has the state contract, and, uh, by ordinance, uh, by variance, uh, we can, we can purchase locally if they give it to us within a 3% variance and not violate if we don't purchase off contract. And then we can do it through a local vendor. So that's why we, uh, take it to Beale Hood, and of course, they all know what the contract prices are, so they work within, uh, the guidelines to get down to 3%. If they go over 3%, and they say they can't do it at that price, then we would have to buy it off the state contract.
We'll call it to buy local barriers. Make a motion to approve.
Johnny Blunt.
Aye.
Jason Hood.
Aye.
Bobby Martin.
Aye.
Lamar Marshall.
Aye.
Mike Williams.
Aye.
Motion approved.
Number four. A resolution to authorize United Way of Southeast Louisiana to sell alcohol with high and low content at The Purse's For a Purpose fundraiser event being held at Hammond Regional Arts Center on September 13th, 6:00 PM to 9:00 PM. Donna List.
Thank you, council. And yes, I'm here to ask for the resolution to approve this. This is our first fundraising event for the United Way, and of course, it's an effort and attempt to increase our campaign dollars for our, to distribute to our nonprofits that serve Tansworth Parish.
It's to be held at the regional arts center?
Yes.
Motion to approve. Second.
Johnny Blunt.
Aye.
Jason Hood.
Aye.
Bobby Martin.
Aye.
Lamar Marshall.
Aye.
Mike Williams.
Aye.
Motion approved.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Number five. A resolution, one, approving the submission of an application to Keep Louisiana Beautiful for a Healthy Communities Grant of up to $10,000 for litter prevention and cleanup, recycling, and the promotion of greater environmental awareness. Two, agreeing to match these funds, these grant funds, with up to $2,000 of in-kind donations. And three, authorizing the mayor to sign all grant-related documents. Lacey.
This is a grant that we have been fortunate to receive over the last few years. It comes directly from Keep Louisiana Beautiful to Keep Hammond Beautiful. This year, we are requesting three trash cans, 10 cigarette butt receptacles, one environmental model, some coloring books and crayons that we're going to use for the youth education activities, and then our regular cleanup day supplies, gloves, pick-up sticks, all those kinds of things. The match is all in-kind. It's all volunteer hours, so it's not actual cash match from the grant match fund or anything.
Motion to approve.
Johnny Blunt.
Aye.
Jason Hood.
Aye.
Bobby Martin.
Aye.
Lamar Marshall.
Aye.
Mike Williams.
Aye.
Motion approved.
Thank you.
Final adoption of ordinance. None. Old business, none. New business.
Mr. President, excuse me. It would be permissible for me to speak to an issue regarding the fire ordinance. It was the first thing on the agenda, and I was late. If it's not, I'll sit down.
Coming up next.
It's coming up, but it's not for, for public comment. It's just for a vote.
If it's on the agenda, then you'd be allowed to speak.
Thank you.
New business. Number one. Final adoption of an ordinance to provide for written authorization for trash fires and penalties for violation.
My name is Louise Bostick, 112 Elm Drive in Hammond. It bothers me very much, this new ordinance. When it was originally brought up, I was here, and it was, uh, there was not going to be a fine for, for, first thing, I was just going to say written permission was necessary for a fire. And the ordinance allows incinerator burning, and I spoke to the chief regarding this, and he said, uh, incinerator is defined as an underground facility that is smokeless, which is a very expensive piece of equipment and a commercial, uh, facility mostly. To pass this ordinance, as I read it from Mr. Vick's notes, is going to take away incentive for individuals to clean up these abandoned lots. I spent four months this summer cleaning up one particular lot. Large pieces that would not fit in my handmade incinerator out of a 50-gallon drum with the top cut off and vent holes in the bottom, I took to the curb and the city hauled off. But it would have been a tremendous burden on the city to pull that to the street. I had another lot that I cleaned a few years ago. It cost $1,000 to have the debris hauled off, and the lot is just not, it's not valuable. What, what I'm afraid is going to happen is you're going to take away not only the incentive, but the ability for someone like me to be able to afford to clean these abandoned and blighted properties. And we have, the Macedonia Church right now has a, a prob, the same kind of a problem. They're not burning because they have, they don't have the incinerators or the protected areas for burning, and, uh, so we're trying to find something affordable so they can get the debris removed for those lots they're clearing. And they're doing a great service to the community by doing that. But, uh, this, this ordinance is bothering me, and the fines are pretty, pretty high. I just wish you would consider that you might be taking away incentive for individuals who want to get control of those lots and clean them up. And, uh, as I say, the one that I worked on, on Chestnut Street this summer, took most of the summer, and, uh, a lot of burning, and the neighbors said, "We can't believe you got this cleaned up." But we did, and it was because of meticulously putting these things in the barrel. There was no fire hazard. It was, uh, it was not going to catch anything on fire. It was contained, and it was very hard work.
I can address that for you since I put the ordinance up. I think that prior to this ordinance, there was never an authorization to burn in the city limits, and I think that that's the...
Excepting an incinerator, and that...
Well, let me, let me finish. Let me finish. So, so I think that the discrepancy was that some people may have thought there was, and others said there wasn't, and then it was, was pretty much a confusing type of environment. And I spoke with the chief, and the chief will tell you that if you were burning trash prior to this ordinance, you were already in violation of the, of the existing ordinance because the existing ordinance is the same language. Only difference is, one, that we're asking for a written authorization, which wasn't required prior to. And then, two, we added the, we added the fine so that we can, you know, we can then deter people from burning trash altogether. And that's, you know, that's...
And I'm not questioning that, and that, that concerns me a great deal when people just, uh, in the fall rake up a little pile of leaves and set them on fire.
So, still, Louise, you still have the option, and when we left as a council, we're leaving that found decision up to the chief. And if the chief thinks that it's something he wants to approve, then the chief has the right to do that. We're not going, we're not going to go against the chief's wishes or, or whatever he decides or whoever he designates to decide that. So we're not going to be in that space doing, making that decision. What we've said is that that decision has to, or the ordinance says, if the council approves it, that that decision falls in responsibility of our chief and not with the, with the average citizen.
Yeah. I understand that.
So you still have the option if the chief allows it to happen.
Yeah, but this is a, this is an incinerator that costs thousands of dollars. And I...
Andre, you might want, you might help me with this, Andre, because I think prior to, we haven't really changed the ordinance at all. The existing ordinance is the same ordinance.
Yeah.
You haven't changed the ordinance.
Yeah, the only difference really is that instead of authorization, it says written authorization from the chief or his designate.
But there wasn't a fine.
Yeah, there was. Actually, it says whoever's, this is the existing ordinance. Whoever starts or sets a fire within the municipal limits without protection by a proper furnace or incinerator shall be punished as provided in section 1.8 of the code, and that's a $500, up to a $500 per occurrence fine.
Okay.
The recommended change starts the fines at not more than $100 plus court cost, so it's more of a staggered type, starting lower. But if, if the council does not approve this change, it's still unlawful to burn fires in New York.
What do you define up to $500 on the first...
You could define up to $500 versus instead of, instead of up to $100.
I guess, I guess my biggest concern is defining an incinerator.
Yes. Furnace, yeah. The issue's going to be a proper furnace or incinerator.
Yeah.
And I don't think the attempt is to stop chimneys or people barbecuing in their backyard, but that's really going to be for the chief or his designate to sort out what's a proper furnace or incinerator.
Yes, that's, I guess that's...
Yes, ma'am. I understand, yes.
And that's not part of this definition. Well, I remember the comments, "No, there are no fines." I, I remember those being discussed and, and being passed around, so I think there was not an awareness of the...
And that's the whole, and I think we're bringing awareness to the, to the ordinance, and we're just trying to clean it up, Louise. We're not trying to reinvest the wheel. We're just sort of trying to make it a little clearer so that, so that everybody knows, and it makes it easier for enforcement of the ordinance. Um, so, and I, so I think that, like we said, if, if the chief makes that decision, then, you know, we have to trust the chief is making a decision that's best for the city.
Let me ask you, this would be improper for me to ask the chief's opinion about incinerator approvals, such as the one that I used all summer?
Stop to that.
Would that be inappropriate? To ask it in front of this council so that you could hear the answer, I guess.
That's, that's the only...
Yes.
I'm sorry, you have, chief.
Well, there's, there's a couple of things, and that's what we want to make sure, is that still, there's even a state law for, for the burning, that you got to be within 1,000 feet of, you can't be within 1,000 feet of a non-owned dwelling. So really, within the city limits, we can't be within 1,000 feet of somewhere. So we're also looking at pollutants and stuff like that, and that gets into the EPA laws and everything. Uh, what Ms. Louise is talking about, though, is there is incinerators, and I told her that we do the one, uh, if there's a big land clearing, people get these under, we dig a hole, put the incinerator underneath, they give it the air, fresh air, more oxygen to it, the cleaner burn, the less pollutant is going out to the air. We do allow that on occasions, but we still have to meet that 1,000-feet barrier. The problem with some of the incinerators, like you said, a 55-gallon drum is not an approved one now because you got to have some spark, uh, some, uh, spark arrestor-type stuff where, you know, ambers doesn't fly out of the container and go to your neighbor or something like that. So with those type of, uh, incinerators, they are expensive because they have to be sort of a closed unit and be very, um, effective, uh, efficient in burning of the fire. And that would be the only reason we would do that. Just a 55-gallon drum doesn't meet the requirements now, the incinerator, because it doesn't have the, the screen mesh, all that kind of stuff to keep ambers and all that from flying away. So, uh, you know, what, I do, I understand when you're trying, trying to clean up the lots, but we also got to remember that there's also other laws there besides just the burning. We also have pollution laws and stuff like that that we have to look at. Um, and if you can't be within 1,000 feet, you're polluting other people's right for fresh air, and that's something that we just have to look at that gets beyond the actual fire aspect.
Chief, when I was talking, I didn't really get that too in-depth of it, but you bringing this up. I have several of my constituents very close to me that have outdoor fireplaces. What's, what's...
If it's a recreational fire, then that state law comes down to a recreational fire at that point.
Okay.
If it's, but you got to show that it's either for cooking of food, um, or a recreational fire of like a campfire-type thing, the chimney is and stuff like that, those are where they come into it. But at that point, you're burning, uh, some type of wood or something like that, you know, whether it's, you're not burning debris, uh, type things.
I'm not going to burn trash. I just burn the...
Right.
The brush.
But the leaves and stuff like that wouldn't be something, you know, you wouldn't be burning leaves in a chimney because of the smoke and all that kind of output. You'd be burning regular wood, firewood. Uh, I mean, that's your regular fireplaces, too. You're burning actual fire.
Just an outdoor fireplace.
Correct. And like I said, I'm not trying to, you know, camp, but just, we got to be very careful when we say, you know, what is, and it is a very, you know, legitimate question, you know, what's that approved furnace and incinerator? And I think I brought that up. Um, you know, they're just expensive to get because of all the clean air that you got to be running through them to lessen the pollutant. You don't want the ambers flying out, and that's what happens, and that's when it does become very, you know, cost prohibitive to try to burn just, uh, leaves and debris, stuff like that. Solid waste.
I'm going to use a screen on top. I just, I just think you're tying my hands again. It's just...
But once again, we're not changing anything that was already there. So all we're doing is adding one out of the line. That's all we're doing. So we're really not changing the law. We're just kind of making it a little clearer so that people know that they have to go to the chief and get it right so they can have that longer conversation and make sure they fully understand the rules of engagement to avoid a fine. So we're actually, I think, helping citizens by giving them an outlet to get clarification before they take the fine themselves to, to, to burn. So I think it's a good, a good way to do it.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. All right.
Motion to approve.
Johnny Blunt.
Aye.
Jason Hood.
Aye.
Bobby Martin.
Aye.
Lamar Marshall.
Aye.
Mike Williams.
Aye.
Motion approved.
Number two. Final adoption of an ordinance to adopt and establish a tax on all taxable property within the corporate limits of Hammond for the year 2014. Public Works, two mills. General Funds, nine point zero four mills. Police plus fire, 10 mills. Total, 21.04 mills. Are there any public input before the vote is taken? Any public input?
Johnny Blunt.
Aye.
Jason Hood.
Aye.
Bobby Martin.
Aye.
Lamar Marshall.
Aye.
Mike Williams.
Aye.
Motion approved.
Introduction of ordinance and set of public hearing. Introduction of an ordinance to accept the dedication of 15-foot utility servitude for maintenance of water line that serves the Camellia subdivision located on Lot 3 of the Sims Minor Subdivision at 1409 South Elm Street. Zone RM-2 and Iowa Addition Overlay, SDF 2014-7-3. Recommended approval by Planning Commission. Josh Taylor.
Subdivision, minor, three lots going on Elm Street, and dedication of a subdivision located on Lot 3 of the Sims Minor subdivision at 1409 South Elm Street. servitude that a water line already runs through. This is just for introductions.
Motion to introduce.
Johnny Blunt.
Aye.
Jason Hood.
Aye.
Bobby Martin.
Aye.
Lamar Marshall.
Aye.
Mike Williams.
Aye.
Motion approved. Public hearing is set for September 2nd, 2014.
Number two, introduction of an ordinance to approve an expanded conditional use request by Carolyn Abram, owner, to allow placement of a mobile home meeting all code requirements on Lot E-1 in Block 2 of Lincoln Park subdivision located at 2909 Garner Street, Zone RS-3, ECU 2014-7-1. Recommended approval with conditions by zoning commission, 4 to 1 vote. Josh.
Uh, ECU, she just, uh, wants to put a triple Y on her lot. ECU's in with her, so if she moves out, the trailer has to go too, so consent councilman Marshall's district, so.
It's a brand new trailer.
Yeah, it is.
Motion to introduce.
Johnny Blunt.
Aye.
Jason Hood.
Aye.
Bobby Martin.
Aye.
Lamar Marshall.
Aye.
Mike Williams.
Aye.
Motion approved. Public hearing is set for September 2nd, 2014.
Number three, introduction of an ordinance for final subdivision approval for Pelican Professional Business Park subdivision, Lots 1, 2A, and 4 through 11. Acceptance, acceptance of dedication of Pelican Professional Park, 50-foot right-of-way and cul-de-sac, in accordance with final plat by Stanley K. Turner, dated June 27, 2014, and acceptance of dedication of all public utilities in accordance with AS-BUILT survey, pages 4-9, 4 through 9 of 13, by T.C. Spangler, Jr., PE, dated 1/19/2006, located at 15521 Club Deluxe Road, Zone C-H, SDF 2014-7-1. Recommended approval by planning commission. Josh.
This is more, uh, just paperwork getting clarified than anything. When they were overlaying Club Deluxe and doing the work on Club Deluxe, one of the attorneys called and said that, um, they noticed that some of the signatures weren't in place for the final subdivision on this, uh, Pelican Parks. So we're doing more housecleaning here, is pretty much all it is, so.
Motion to introduce.
Johnny Blunt.
Aye.
Jason Hood.
Aye.
Bobby Martin.
Aye.
Lamar Marshall.
Aye.
Mike Williams.
Aye.
Motion approved. Public hearing is set for September 2nd, 2014.
Thank you, Josh. Number four, introduction of an ordinance to amend the budget fiscal year 2014 through 2015 to appropriate $16,363 from general fund, fund balance to the auditing and accounting account to comply with the general accounting standard board. Larry Francis.
Good evening.
Good evening, sir.
This is to kind of appropriation for the one item we had as a write-up. We've been having this item several times, uh, and that's for the financial system that we have, Munis, to actually generate the consolidated financial, comprehensive financial report, auditing report. In the past, the auditors have been writing that report, and audit cost was based on that inclusion. This $16,000 will not limit the current audit rate, but it won't go any higher because we would be able to produce that report ourselves, and they would just actually audit that report rather than have to audit and write the report. That will eliminate that one exception that we've had constantly for the last three or four years. It's, uh, the Louisiana legislature, state auditor, they want to see the systems do that report, and that's what this module will do. As a matter of fact, it's going to increase the council's accounting audit budget by that $16,000, so it's part of the audit process.
Motion to introduce.
Johnny Blunt.
Aye.
Jason Hood.
Aye.
Bobby Martin.
Aye.
Lamar Marshall.
Aye.
Mike Williams.
Aye.
Motion approved. Public hearing is set for September 2nd, 2014.
Thank you, sir.
Motion to introduce.